PM. So I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee at six thirty PM on November nineteenth, two thousand twenty five. And if you would mute and rise to join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thank you everyone for joining us. We have, uh, the next on the agenda is public comment. I've not received any public comment this evening. So we will continue to move the agenda to the consent agenda. Amy, do you want to make a motion on that?
Sure, I moved to, um, approve the consent agenda of November nineteenth, two thousand twenty five as presented.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Alright, everybody, we're gonna take a roll call vote. Uh, Amy?
Yes.
I vote yes. Matt? Robin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Gillian?
Yes.
Uh, Jackie?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Alright, I think I got everybody. Let me know if I didn't. Alright. Uh, so consent agenda passes. Thank you, everyone. The school committee chairperson has no specific update beyond what is already in the agenda. And so we're moving right along. So glad that our student representatives are prompt because we're on their item now. So I see Maria and Ryan are here. Hi, guys.
Hello.
What can you share with us?
Um. Maria, you can get, you can go ahead and start stuff.
So last time I did mention, we have our parpuff happening this Friday, November twenty first, but we also have our play happening on Friday, and it's a Midsummer Night's Dream. So, I mean, opening night is always very exciting. And our food drive, collect, um, our food drive is happening, and the collection bins are located right outside the main office in Neshoba. Uh, and the food collection is in November twenty fifth, so you guys still have time to, no. Well, and just a reminder that every item counts, not just food. If you want to like give personal hygiene items also. It's everything, it's received with very much appreciation. And, um, yeah, and then, I think, yeah.
Um, so when there's sport registrations and the season, uh, is coming up. Um, the Massachusetts Association of Student Representatives, I'll give you a quick update on what they are doing. Um, so they're creating a new position for one adult. It's, um, the organization is entirely student-led right now. Um, and it will continue to be that, but basically this, um, we received a grant from the bar association for like a hundred thousand dollars for the next three years. Each year, um, a hundred thousand dollars. Um, so part of that would go to paying a part-time, um, adult who looks to kind of expand our network. Um, and is really looking into some of this more like legislative stuff, um, between districts and like attending different conferences that, um, the students can't really attend and just kind of, um, and they'll like propose new initiatives for the organization to kind of explore. Um, and then another thing they're doing is they're working on designing district-specific conferences. So right now we have like the annual delegate assembly, which is from all over Massachusetts. But they're also gonna establish like, um, a meeting that with schools from like our given area. Um, so like more di- uh, specific problems and stuff like that can be kind of approached and talked to with student representatives from that area. Um, I think that covers the list for this week.
Wonderful. Thanks, guys. Uh, to the members, do you have any questions for our student, Gillian?
Maria, I was just wondering where you guys donate all of the food that you collect.
Okay, so actually, that's an amazing question. Let me go check the email, cuz I, we all received the email about it. But, hmm. Okay, all donations will go directly to, um. Oh, my god. I'm not gonna know how to pronounce this. Like. Ugh, it's W E, no, W H E A T, and I know I'm gonna pronounce it wrong, that's why I'm so little. Community connections.
Wheat, yeah.
That's what I thought it was. Pronouncing it very wrong and things that are completely stupid. So, yeah, community connections, that's where it's gonna go.
Oh, that's amazing. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Any other questions for our students? Alright, I'm not seeing any golden hands.
I don't have a question, but I'm just, uh, wanted to tell Ryan that I really appreciate the updates on, um, the student representative organization and like, it sounds like, um, not only is it a great opportunity for you, but for our district and for students representatives across the state. Like, it sounds, it sounds like an amazing opportunity. I'm so glad that we have representation from Neshoba. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, guys, we appreciate you. So thanks for being here and letting us know what's going on. Uh, we're gonna move the agenda to the next item here, and that is the superintendent's report. And so I will turn it over to Superintendent Downing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that. Um, before we begin, if I could ask Ms. Matt, oh, you already did. Uh, Dr. Boynton just entered the room, so that's great. And I know that Ms. Hannigan is gonna be joining us, uh, shortly. Is that correct, Ms. Friend? We're, we're getting people the correct links to come join us.
She's on her way. She's on her way.
She's gonna come, uh, talk a little bit, um, about our survey, uh, map for the year. So while we're doing that, why don't we give her a chance and I'll transition, um, to the timeline of requests for proposals. Uh, so Mr. Mulcaren, I'm calling you up to bat, uh, a, a little early in the order here. Um, we're gonna have a brief report today. There's no new strategic items since the last time we met that are, uh, that we're reporting back on. So, Mr. Mulcaren, can you, uh, brief the committee on our timelines for the two requests for proposals?
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent Downing, and good evening to the school committee. Uh, we're presenting a brief update on the status of our request for proposals process for both food services and the before and after-school childcare program. Uh, specifically, we're providing an overview of, of the timeline of those RFPs, obviously. So, uh, with regards to food service, uh, that would need to be submitted to DESI by January thirtieth. They would have an opportunity to review the template language, uh, prior to that getting posted. Uh, and once it is posted, it would take approximately sixty days uh, to conduct the entirety of the process, depending upon how many, uh, proposals we receive, uh, interview times, site visits, tastings, uh, all those types of things. But at the end of the process, a proposed contract would need to be approved by DESI, and then it would be brought to school committee. So you as a governing body would be the final okay on that. So we would anticipate, uh, anticipate, uh, submitting a food services RFP template as the first step to DESI in December. Uh, there's no DESI approval process for the RFP for before and after-school care. However, we do need to follow proper procurement, um, laws and regulations, and would expect this process to also take sixty days. Uh, from the posting date to a contract being brought forward to school committee for approval. Uh, we anticipate posting the before and after-school RFP also, uh, in December or early January.
Okay, any questions on that item before we move to the survey strategy? Okay, not hearing any. Uh, I wonder, oh, Ms. Pock, thank you.
Hi, Sharon. Sorry, I couldn't find my golden hand. Um. So let me just, when we met two weeks ago, it seemed like there was a lot of confusion in the community, but especially in Lancaster about what was happening here and, and why this was happening. So I would just want to make sure that the process is clear. So, a- and so that it's clear to me and to everybody else who's watching or interested. Um, what's happening here? So, um. The towns have made it clear over a period of several years that finances are tight in the towns, and that they want the district to find ways to rein in the budget. And this has been coming up for several years through, in the budgeting process. Um, and it's been happening in the budgeting processes. Things have been streamlined and efficiencies have been found, um, throughout different pockets in the district. And so right now, what is happening with this RFP is exploring another option to create an efficiency for the district. Um, and the RFP process will give us that information. And then, at that point, the school committee makes the decision about what's in the best interest for the communities and for the families based on the recommendation that the district, that the administration brings forward and based on what is going to be the best provide the best programs or the best food services for our communities and for our families. Did I say that correctly?
Yes, Ms. Bockall, and, and I'll just, um, uh, sort of put a stamp on that. Uh, yes, your words, I think, outlined it. This is a process that is gonna help us understand, um, um, you know, the operational responsibility in these two sectors as we do that with every element of the budget. Um, so these are the things that we have constant conversations around. What we get, we don't get direction from our towns about specific things to examine. Uh, we just continually do our due diligence like we have in past years with looking at non-salary accounts, developing our class-side standards ratio or administrative standards ratios to ensure that, uh, we're, we're being responsible to our taxpayers. And in the end, yes, it is a vote of the school committee. So once we analyze those requests for proposals, the district will point the committee forward on a recommendation based upon the findings uh, from those RFPs, and, uh, ultimately, the school committee makes the decision.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the timeline? Okay.
Sorry, can I just ask a point of clarification?
Yeah.
So, to be very clear, it would be approval from DESI first. And then it would be brought to the school committee based on what Superintendent Downing said.
Mr. Mulcaren?
Yeah, so DESI has a, a model template that they require that we use. We have to use that model template and get their approval to post, meaning that we've used the model template according to their regulations and standards and as they require. Uh, once we go through the process of posting and, you know, reviewing responses and the whole process there, uh, if we do move forward with recommending a, a contract, DESI has to see that contract first and approve the contract from their lens before it would come to you for approval. Your approval would allow, uh, the superintendent to sign the contract.
Thank you.
Alright, and is, it looks like that might be the only, um, couple of questions we had for that, Kirk.
Great. Um, our next item is, uh, our survey strategy for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. I am being an opportunist here in bringing forward our communications specialist and innovation, uh, pathways coordinator, Bridgette Hannigan. She's done a tremendous job for these in this area. She is the one, uh, that leads up, uh, the construction and distribution of our surveys. Um, while we as a team work on, uh, the content of those. So she's here to just talk about uh, the pathway of the surveys and what we're going to be doing this year. So, Ms. Hannigan, take it away.
Alright, um, so we developed our survey strategy over the summer, um, and we were really looking to identify areas that and topics that we wanted feedback on while also making sure that we were building a timeline that was mindful of avoiding survey fatigue. Um, so in identifying those topics, we launched it to our leadership team during the summer retreat so that not only we could kind of walk through the survey tool with them, but also to gather feedback from them on if, you know, we were hitting the topics that they felt were important. Um, you know, like Superintendent Downing said, I might be the person that sends these surveys out, but it's really a team effort to identify the questions that we're asking and the reasons behind why we're asking them. Um, I think probably the most important element of the survey strategy, um, or at least the most notable one, is that we've been really mindful to make sure that we are building time for our leadership team to look at the data and look at the responses that are coming in so that we can close that feedback loop and make sure that families, students, staff who are taking these surveys are not getting fatigued from the amount of surveys, but also not getting fatigued because they feel like we're not hearing their survey responses.
Ms. Masterson, would you mind pulling up the, uh, survey map for the year? Um. Thought Exchange is our primary surveying tool that we'll be using as we're moving away from the Panorama platform as that contract expired and and we didn't feel the need to carry two contracts. Um. And so. I know it's in the meeting materials, so you probably have it in front of you, but for the benefit of all, we'll put it up on the screen here. Okay, go ahead, Bridget.
Um, yeah, so Alita, if you don't mind, Ms. Masterson, if you don't mind, um, just scrolling down a little bit, we've identified three main target audiences, staff, students, and families. Um, and we've really kind of tried to go through and be very mindful of the topics we're asking, but also the frequency at which we're asking questions. If you look at the analysis timeline, those are meetings that we have pre-identified. Where once these surveys close, we'll sit down as a leadership team or as a principal team. Um, Thought Exchange does an absolutely phenomenal job of taking all of the responses you get and formatting them in a way that allows you to really easily identify trends. So we'll come together as a team, look at those trends, and then if you look at the far right side, the follow-up deadline, that's where we'll be letting, you know, we'll be emailing out or responding to recipients, letting them know, thank you for your feedback. Um, here are the things that we've identified as trends, and, you know, we'll be using these moving forward. Uh, but really, I think it's, the survey strategy is built to be from beginning to end so that we are really utilizing these surveys to their max, um, ability. And I think we were also mindful of, these are our baseline surveys, so this is what is absolutely going out this year. There's a high likelihood that we'll identify other areas of feedback throughout the school year, and those surveys can either be added in as additional surveys, or we can look to identify if there's an upcoming survey in which we could include specific questions that would give us the feedback we're looking for, or if there are other tools that we can use. Happy to answer.
Masterson, would you mind scrolling down a little farther? So one of the questions, thank you, that's where I wanted to point out. One of the questions, uh, we, uh, that I was asked previously was around, uh, getting some surveys, uh, our faculty, for our leaders, our faculty and staff do their three sixty surveys of their leaders in May. And that's when, um, the leadership team also completes their survey for me at that time. So I just wanted to point that out, cuz that was a question earlier this year. So with that, we can take that down. Are there any questions?
Uh, Shondor?
Sorry, took me a second. Um. With the surveys, uh, are they all anonymous? Are there demographic questions, so you can do sort of cross-cut analysis, or, um, do you know who is responding so you can correlate it with other data you have?
It's gonna largely depend on the survey that's going out. Um, traditionally in the past, like our sense of belonging survey through Panorama has been anonymous for students. Um, but we are still collecting demographic information so that we're able to actually, you know, evaluate and analyze those results. Uh, but the short answer is it's gonna be specific to the survey, um, and the purpose of the survey.
But you have some standard, um, demographic questions, so you can do the same cross-cuts across all surveys?
Yes.
Oh, that's awesome.
Any other questions about this? Go ahead, Jackie.
I didn't have this question prepared ahead of time. It was just based on something that Superintendent Downing said. I, I, I know that we're moving away from using the Panorama, uh, data. Uh, is the district still able to retain that? Okay.
Amy?
Yeah.
Yes, we have retained it. Sorry, I was muted.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you there. Um, so I guess my question is, this is an engagement. I, I, is the, is the main purpose of these surveys to um, gauge communication? Cuz a- at the top, it's called communication and survey strategy, and on the second page, it's called engagement. And, um, and I'm, I'm just wondering, because there are some things that I would like to see incorporated into the survey strategy, but I want to make sure it's part of what the goal of of what you're looking to gather information on is, um.
So the focus of these surveys is, is teasing out the items that we, we discussed with our leadership council so that we can, uh, gather that information to make uh, the effective steps that we want to make. So we'll be reporting back on what those highlights are. Um, but the student engagement survey, for instance, is, it will follow along sort of the same themes and trends as the Panorama survey, um, did as one example.
Okay. Um, I wonder if when you survey the K through twelve families on fall conferences, I know that has could you also include open houses? Because I noticed that that wasn't listed on this, um, mapping anywhere, and I, I personally feel like they're a very important part of the family experience, um.
Well, we're, those surveys have already been, are already out there, correct, Ms. Hannigan?
Yes, those were already sent out.
So, uh, but I think that's good feedback, and we'll notate that and add, um, open houses, uh, into our follow-up next year.
It sounds like maybe you just need to add it to this table if you've already done it.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, um, my other question, or I guess my other ask would be that when you are um, looking to assess students' sense of belongings and their level of engagement in school, if I see that the target audience there is the students themselves, which I love that we're gathering, you know, information straight from the students. I feel like the information might be richer if families were also, um, part of the target there, and um, there was a third, oh, so that's, that's my second point. I don't know you know, if you want to respond to that or not.
Well, when I think of student engagement, I do think directly from the student, because when you go to talk about student engagement from the lens of the parent, it's now through that filter, it, and it becomes that percept, it becomes a perception survey at that point. Um, so I hear your point. I guess we could develop that topic more to understand specifically uh, what it is you'd be interested in learning.
I just know as a parent, sometimes my kids appear different in school than they do at home, and maybe having both sets of data would help inform you know, your understanding of what's really going on.
What's difficult about that, just in terms of a survey strategy, and I'm not, uh, contradicting your point, I think it's a good one. Um, but when you, you survey sort of a third person about the other person, um, it loses validity in its assessment of what you're trying to assess because it's not a direct result of. So that's why uh, it, it would have to be a survey of the parents. I think not the parent's perception of the student. So I think it's, it's the semantic, it's, so it'd be the, a survey of the parents' thoughts on that, but it can't necessarily be the parents' thoughts on the students' thoughts, because then we start getting into muddy waters that we can't define well to help us then apply it to the work. Because ultimately, what these surveys, uh, are intended to do is inform us so that we can, uh, validate or identify uh, areas that are important and make the reinforcement or actionable change that we would desire.
Yep, and, um, along that thought process, I guess my only other piece of feedback is that um, I see that you're asking, what was your most positive experience this year at school to the students? And I wonder if we should also be asking, um, you know, in, in, in light of our goals for being a, a learning organization and with the goal of continuous improvement, if there's, we could be asking a question like, you know, what was one thing that could have gone better? Or, you know, one thing that, um. Yeah, maybe that, I don't know how you would phrase it, but something along those lines, like, is there something that could have gone better or that we could do to make your experience at school better? Just my two cents.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think I'll jump in with my, I have two questions for you guys. Um, and I think that Amy kind of covered the second one mostly, but I think that the last two rows of the chart are, um, they're leading. So the two questions are, are leading. And that's what we call a push-pull. So I think that you need to kind of frame it differently, uh, make the question more neutral, or just maybe ask it two different ways, like Amy said, because I think that, um, uh, kids, most of them anyway, many of them in Neshoba and in a lot of school systems, they only know Neshoba. And so they don't really know what they don't know. And so I know that the family perspective can be useful because a student might come home, um, and is cramming for a multiple-choice test and is really like trying hard and wants to do really well. And a parent is thinking, wow, I really wish it wasn't another multiple-choice test. And the student will not know any different and say, oh, I think that this, you know, this is normal, this is, this is the way you learn, this is the way it's done. This is the way it's done. But I think that parent perception can provide you with another angle on the teaching and learning. And, um, so I don't, I don't want to get inside my own kid's head, I'm good, but, um, I think that to provide you with my perspective as I raise my child while they go through the school system and all the parents, I think can be really, another triangulation that can be useful for the teaching and learning department. So I, yeah, I agree with you, Amy. So I, I would like to see those two surveys worded differently. Um, I also think, I had a quick question for you, just like about the operation of Thought Exchange. I noticed that when I took the survey on the conferences, I was so grateful to give all the feedback that I gave. Um, so thank you for that. But normally Thought Exchange um, asks me to weigh in on the commentary of other survey takers, and it didn't offer any of that methodology this time?
That is typically when an exchange is set up. The reason that we opted to do a survey for this was so that people wouldn't be, um, held back by concerns of others seeing their responses. So this just means like you can give your full response and we can collect that data. The exchange is like what we used at the beginning of the school year with staff members where we wanted to create something a little bit more collaborative. Um, and Superintendent Downing, feel free to step in if I'm misspeaking on any of this, but the reason the choice was to keep it as a survey without seeing other responses was just to increase the comfortability of the participants.
Yeah, the, the element that you saw, uh, for the conferences is what gave us the confidence to move away from Panorama because Thought Exchange has broadened their capabilities. So we took advantage of that. Um, and, um, so Ms. Hannigan, I thought you answered the question quite well.
But do you guys think that you will be using that, that methodology going forward with some of the other surveys? Because I actually found that aspect of it to be the most revolutionary part.
Oh, yeah.
Ultimately, I don't know what you're seeing on the backend, but it felt like a Google form to me. Whereas Thought Exchange was like far more powerful the last time I engaged in it.
Yeah, yeah, no doubt.
Yeah, I think we would just keep it at some of those shorter surveys so that it's easier for people to respond without, you know, all of the varying answers. Um, but yes.
Yeah.
And definitely, oh, go ahead.
Yeah. I was just gonna say that I, I put some information in there that I thought to myself, well, maybe my position is an outlying one. And that's why I like Thought Exchange, cuz it can kind of get rid of my outlying, um, position. So, a- and that can be more useful for you guys, because if I'm an outlier, I don't want to totally skew your data, um, which is why I liked it.
I have one last question. Oh, go ahead, Jack. I mean.
Yeah, I think Jackie's up. Go ahead, Jackie.
I'm just wondering too, if we if we loop back around to this at some point in the future, it would be great to hear what response rates you are getting for those of us who like that kind of stuff.
Yeah, that's the that's the last column on the chart. You see that uh, we will be coming back on the highlights from those service.
Go ahead, Amy.
That's what I was gonna say.
Results matter. Okay. Anything else on the um, survey procedure or strategy? All right, uh, we're grateful for you guys not only taking this work on, but sharing it with us and making it super transparent. So um, the community knows what's coming. So it's great.
Thank you for the opportunity to present it.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Ms. Hanigan.
Right. Superintendent's report?
Sure does.
Oh, well then, let's move on to new business. Um, I am going to turn it back over to Kirk because we have the NRHS Robotics Travel Request, which we didn't necessarily expect, but it was um, so we kind of moved it around on the planning calendar, but it did make its way to us because it's ready and uh, sooner the better. So.
That's right.
Go ahead, Kirk.
Well, we got, we got a real bang up and excited uh, uh, leadership team with our robotics team with the uh, retirement, Mr. Fordiani. So I am going to turn it over to Dr. Boynton at this time um, uh, to introduce our request for robotics travel.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Downing, and thank you Chair Viverito and School Committee for the opportunity to be here this evening. Hopefully you can hear me. I've got my earbuds in because there's some family noise. Um, and I am very, very pleased to introduce our new robotics advisors, Erin Studdam and Brian Broder, who are longtime mentors to the program. Ryan is also a parent of a robotics uh, team member in the program. And um, we are our newer advisors, and we are um, here to share with you our proposal and and request for um, preliminary approval for our um, world trip uh, competition in the springtime. Um, and with that, I will turn it over to Erin and to Brian um, to share with the committee. You have the field trip uh, packet, so they'll just introduce a little bit about the um, the competition and the timeline. And then I believe um, it would go to a vote for next meeting, so not not for this evening. So this is informational. Erin and Brian, welcome.
Thank you very much. Um, Erin, I'll jump in and just give the framework for the trip, and then you can tell a little bit of something about the robotic team. Um, for our for our team this year, um, this will be the fourth year in a row that we're requesting to go to the World Championships in Houston. We've been able to go the last three years. Um, and in fact, last year was our most successful year where we made it to the top level of competition in what they call the Einstein Field, which means we were like really the best of the best and got to compete on the highest level um, with all the teams across the world. So it's super exciting for our students um, and for us mentors and all the parents. Um, so this year's trip is very similar to the previous three years. It's in Houston, Texas. The dates of the competition are from a Wednesday, April twenty ninth through Saturday, um, May second. And our travel will typically be around those same windows around that Tuesday night or Wednesday through like Saturday night, Sunday. Um, and we typically request that our parents um, support the students that are going um, in terms of paying for their travel. So typically, the parents will book airfare um, for the students. And then for hotel and lodging, actually through the first organization, they partner with another company called Conference Direct, who is responsible for booking the thousands of rooms that all the first students need. So um, we qualify for the event um, approximately two weeks before the travel date. Um, but because we're, we've gone three years in a row, we actually get a an invite to book our hotels much sooner in the year. So in previous years, it was a lot of a la- last minute type of activities um, being able to book. So although we we don't find out if we qualify until about two weeks before the event, we should be able to secure some of our travel um, much earlier in the um, in the season around January, February um, timeframe. And then so typically that Conference Direct banks an allotment of hotel rooms based on our need for the number of students going um, through their vetting process, and then um, the parents then book direct through that hotel allotment um, for the trip. Um, the rest of the details, I think, are in the packet for any of the other nuances about just getting back and forth from the airport. Um, we've been lucky that our hotel has been really close to the venue, so we don't need any additional transportation um, on a daily basis. And Erin, I don't know if you want to give a little bit more color, just kind of on what the event brings for the students and the team, um, and for the program overall.
Uh, yeah. So, as Brian said, um, we reached the highest level of play this year, so we were the number one seed on our field, so we, you know, we were the best team on our field in our division. Um, we won our division. We went to Einstein, so that's thirty-two teams out of uh, I think it's almost eight hundred of the ten world champ, six hundred at World Champs. Um, but that puts us in the top five percent of teams in the world. So, you know, obviously the continued support of, you know, Nishoba school district has been helpful for us. Um, you know, the event is a huge opportunity for our kids to interact with teams from all over the world. Um, this year on our field, we had multiple teams from Israel, Mexico, um, Turkey, and uh, Canada. So, you know, it's a great opportunity for the kids to interact. There's a a really awesome uh, college fair and demos and things like that. Some of you might know who Mark Rober is. He was there last year. So uh, yeah, it's a great opportunity for the kids when you ask them. Um, you know, we start our season meeting, we had our team kickoff about a month ago, and the question we asked the team is, you know, what team do you want to be? You know, how far do you want to go? And every kid says Einstein's the goal. You know, that's the the pinnacle for us. And uh, you know, they're motivated to go back and we're motivated to help them get there. So.
That was my my one big takeaway from last year is that the beginning of last year's season, they had the goal to go to Einstein, and our team has never made it that far. Um, so throughout the year, every event, every night at the school, every project that we worked on, it was within the guise of like, that's our goal, that's our North Star is to make it to Einstein. So it was great to see it sort of plan out. And then when we got to Houston and to Worlds, um, to be prepared, to be excited, to be ready um, for all of our robot skills, our personal skills, um, and then just to execute and succeed. So I think the the kids found a good sense of accomplishment um, when all is said and done.
Yeah, we had, just to share, you know, one of my favorite moments from this season is uh, sixteen ninety is uh, arguably the best team in the world. They're from Israel, and um, they came by our pit to talk to our kids and check out our robot, which was, uh, I think they were all a little bit starstruck that this team that we admire, you know, the world champions, want to see how Nishoba builds a robot, which was really cool for our kids to, you know, get to explain and and show what we're doing.
Thank you, Erin and Brian. Does Madam Chair, does the committee have any questions for our advisors?
Yeah, let's see. Gillian.
Just a quick question out of curiosity. Um, it looks like it's a a pricey trip for the families. If there were hypothetically a student who um, would need assistance in order to attend, how do you guys handle that?
Yeah, we we've offered that every year, both, and we we have an upfront fee, just a couple hundred, like um, teen, B O whatnot, and we offer upfront if any student, you know, um, has an issue paying that, that the team still lets them in. And we've sort of applied the same mentality to the travel for the big events. It's always put out there um, that the value is for the student to be a part of the team all the way through. Um, we do some fundraising as a team, um, which we've been a little, you know, we've improved the fundraising year over year, where we've been able to give the families a little bit of money um, to help go to that travel. Um, but through our nonprofit and the organization, we would have funding to be able to support any student um, that couldn't afford it.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions about the request? All right, I am seeing, I have a quick question for you. The total cost of the trip, you're saying it's somewhere, gonna be somewhere between twenty-two, five and thirty-four thousand dollars.
Thirty-four hundred.
I'm sorry?
Oh, oh, total cost, I'm sorry, yes, thousand.
Yeah. So I'm just looking at the total cost. That range is because you're not totally sure how many kids will be on the team, how many will go.
Yeah, the math was with with, I put I put in there what the assumption was for the number of kids, and I just multiplied it by that fifteen hundred to two thousand.
Yeah, our our hotel cost isn't, we don't know it until we we basically get a block of rooms and get to decide, and since we want to avoid having to take any side type of transportation to the venue, um, we're kind of at the mercy of hotels near the venue.
Yeah, my estimate was based on approximately fifteen students.
Oh, interesting. Okay. And then the fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars, that's an all-in total cost of student, including airfare and everything else.
That's just um, the computation for airfare and hotel. And then we, with also help from the parents, um, work through at least one meal a day that the team helps support or the parents help support.
Great. Okay. And so there might be a little bit of additional cost beyond that, but not a ton.
Yeah, and one thing that Erin and I are super proactive about is we have our sort of official team meeting the first week of December with students and parents. And as a parent myself, it's super important for us to kind of lay out the plan for the whole season to the whole group. So our plan, the first week in December, is to sort of set that expectation with all parents about kind of like both the time investment, but also a little bit about the financial investment um, that we that we get the support from the family. So that way they know now um, versus maybe sometimes in the prior year, some of that stuff was a little bit more last minute, um, and a little bit more of like scattered on trying to raise money or a little bit unclear kind of on what some of those costs might be.
Yeah. Okay, I see Kirk's hand. Go ahead, Kirk.
Yeah, uh, for our members of the committee that are hearing this for the first time, uh, Brian and Erin, well done. Thank you for for being here tonight. Um, we bring this forward in November because once they get into the competition uh, and qualifying schedule, it's a fast turnaround after the qualifiers and then go to the Worlds, and and there's been cases where we had to pull a meeting together to get things approved quickly. So so we adopted a practice a few years ago of approving in the fall with those ranges in there, knowing there'll be some variability to that.
Yeah, we we probably won't know that we qualify until April fifteenth would be the day.
We'll have a, that we find. We'll have a good idea, but we won't officially know until after our district championship. So this year is the biggest break we've ever had between districts and Worlds, and I think it's only thirteen days or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, eleven days.
So we do this practice for both robotics and the DECA program because of the the tight turnaround time after qualifying for those big events.
And where is districts?
Springfield. Is out of the Biggie in Springfield.
Yeah, the Biggie.
Okay. So that's just a day trip.
Yep.
Got it. Okay, Jackie.
So when they make it, we need to make sure that everybody has the link to watch online, because it's really, it's very impressive to see our students on this world stage with kids from all over the world. It's really exciting. Thank you both.
Excellent. So I don't see any other questions. Um, so we all wish you the very best of luck. We're grateful to you to carry this program forward into this next school year, and it's a huge, um, it's a really big reason why Nishoba is so great. So we thank you for doing this again for our kids and for our schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll take up the vote next week. All right, everybody. So we're gonna move the agenda now to the next item of new business, and that is policy IKF, the graduation requirement policy. This is a first reading, so this is an opportunity for all of us to give our policy subcommittee feedback if we think it's necessary, but I'm gonna turn this over to Jackie to um, cue this up, set it up, help us understand what you need us to do.
So I know, thank you. I know that everyone remembers there were these three very time-sensitive policies that we were asked to review with Superintendent Downing and Central Office. Um, so this is the second of those three policies, and this is specifically looking at the graduation requirements. I will let Superintendent Downing um, take over from here, but I did want to communicate that you'll see that there's the red line version, and then a clean copy for school committee members who need to and benefit like me from being able to see it without the red. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reiner. Um, I would like to just open by saying we're in this period of time uh, where with the passage uh, last year of of um, ballot question two, and MCAS being removed as the competency determination requirement, we're in this sort of like bridge time of when uh, uh, the state will be coming out with what will be the future competency determination. I had the great benefit today of attending the Worcester County Superintendent's Meeting where uh, Secretary of Education Patrick Tuttweiler appeared today, and we had quite um, uh, a beneficial discussion around those graduation requirements. So we will be getting uh, the report uh, that the committee has been working on in the next two to three weeks. So we look forward to seeing uh, what has been happening at the state level there. Uh, but in the meantime, Ms. Masterson, if you'll bring it up, um, the first piece we need to to look at was our graduation requirements, and if you could bring up the red line version, Ms. Masterson. We currently have our uh, Nishoba graduation requirements already in policy, and the red line version that's in your meeting material tonight simply points out the changes with that. I will point out that in terms of the coursework, the biggest element in the changes is aligning our graduation expectations to the mass core. Now, what I will say about the mass core is while there are increased requirements according to our graduations, the vast majority of our students somewhere in the ninety percent range are already meeting the mass core requirements. Um, and so it it lines up pragmatically with what our students are already doing. Uh, so there's no changes in the initial element of the policy. If we can scroll down to where you see the red lining, here we go. Um, here's just a a little bit of change in language, but we needed to insert the piece about uh, IKFE, which will be presented to you at the next meeting, which is the competency determination. Uh, so um, it just, that's the sentence that connects the two. And how also explaining that these increases are aligned to the mass core, first developed in two thousand and seven, updated in twenty eighteen. If we move down to the table, those changes in requirements would be going from three years of math to four years. In science, there would be three years of a lab-based science. Social studies, including US history and world history. World languages, um, two years of the same language. Currently, we don't require that. We also recognize you'll see there are some appeal and exception policies to that when there are some circumstances that get in the way of that two-year uh, connection. Uh, also, uh, it gives me an opportunity to point out that physical education is required for four years by Mass General Law. And then additional course circuit of of five years. The total of these, and you'll see it says years, and then we say credits. That's a really important distinction, because uh, when we, in the mass core with the graduation requirements, it says four years. Let's say you were to take two sciences in one year. Well, that doesn't count as two years. It's still just one year. So it's three years that you were enrolled in school that you're taking at least one science as an example. Um, this would uh, take effect for uh, the graduating class, the competency determination takes uh, effect in for the graduating class of twenty twenty-six, and when that comes forward, you'll see uh, that we're in line to meet that competency determination requirement. Um, the adjustments uh, twenty twenty-eight for all other requirements, uh, because you know, we don't want to move the ball on our juniors and seniors on those graduation requirements right now. So then, uh, as we come down, the adjustment of twenty-five credits that we did before needed to be added to the policy. Um, and just some language uh, adjustments. If we move down to the exceptions and alternatives, you'll see the language here, this is language that we worked out with Dr. Boynton and her team uh, around uh, the substitutions of courses and academic coursework. There's a lot of complexities that are involved, particularly when students transferred into Shoba as juniors or even seniors. Um, uh, and if they've come from out of state or even out of country, how do we make those walkovers? So there is uh, a process that allows that where uh, Dr. Boynton and her team uh, can make some uh, decisions to override or provide exceptions as long as the academic rigor is meeting the spirit of our graduation requirements. So uh, with that, uh, we'll take any questions, Madam Chair.
All right, great. See if I can just try to see everybody here. I see Sharon's hand. See if I can just try to see everybody here. I see Sharon's hand.
Ms. Masterson, I think you can pull the policy down.
Um, on page, the second page of that policy, I, there's a line that says, I'm gonna try and look at it at the same time as I'm talking here. It says additional core course, five years.
Yeah.
I don't quite understand what that means.
It's the math that gets us to ninety credits. So it's basically saying there's five years of additional core courses that you can take. So if you did take a double science, that would be one of those. So it's just part of the baseline of how the graduation requirements uh, was was set up previously. Or excuse me, in in the mass core.
I guess I'm confused about the five years. I'm sorry, am I being really?
No, I'm confused too. I think it
I think it's confusing.
Yeah.
So here's what I, here's what I know as a high school teacher, Kirk, is that um, there are, you know, the freshman and sophomore year, there's typically five cores. There's the social studies, science, English, math and and world language. Um, assuming that in the junior year, a kid no longer wants to take world language, then it drops to four core classes. And so those four make up sixteen credits, but they need twenty-five. Oh, I'm sorry, wellness as well, wellness as well. Um, wellness is two credits. So let's say if I'm a freshman, I have five core plus a wellness. So it's twenty-two credits. In that year, I could take up to, I think that they can take up to twenty-eight credits. So that means I have room for one more class, but it looks like you're saying it has to be a core course. So does that mean it can't be a business class? It can't be, it has to be like an English, a science, a social studies?
I think, Madam Chair, this is where uh, some of our language in our current policy of years gets confused with uh, the um, mass core. Uh, the mass core speaks in units. And as you're bringing this up, this is um, where it's providing me that that um, what am I trying to say? What that confusion is of the conversion of units to years. Dr. Boynton, do you want to speak to that?
I I think you're spot on Superintendent Downing. Uh, and essentially the the additional core courses should be the equivalent of full year classes, whether they're two semester science classes or there, it would be the equivalent of a total of four credits, which is a full unit in the mass core, which then is the equivalent of a year.
So Madam Chair, I have uh, pulled up as that question was being asked. This is a resource document, if I may share. So this particular document here is the mass core uh, uh, educational document for parents. And this is where it talks about uh, the unit.
Yeah.
That a unit represents the full academic year of study. Um, and uh, uh, it does not mean students need to be seated in a class for a specific number of hours to receive the credit for the course. You could see that that adds that additional language. So it's it's those additional classes that students do end up taking towards their graduation.
And so why did you use the word core? Course, additional core course. Couldn't it just be additional courses? Like they need to take five additional year-long courses, even e- or like ten semesters of coursework beyond what's above?
I think I think it's a good suggestion. Uh, it's simply just walking, we were walking over the mass core language. Uh, Dr. Boynton, you want to speak to it?
Uh, I I would. When you look at the mass core document, they use the terminology core. And I think they have um, an asterisk there that explains their their methodology for core. So core, there should be the um, two and two is additional core courses provide flexibility to students seeking to take multiple electives and or additional coursework to fill specific interests or follow specific career pathways, including CTE, which is not us, but um, I think if it confuses folks, if we just took out additional course, took out core and put additional courses, I think that
Yeah.
that satisfies that because it's not, it's it's really allowing students to go down that business pathway if they want to. Or if they really are interested in sciences, they can take multiple science electives as long as the equivalent of uh, ten semester or five years of of coursework that gets them to the minimum ninety credits.
Yeah, because I think that it's not um, obvious that that could be ten semester classes. Cause I know a lot of our elective courses are semesters. I actually think more of them should be, but um, maybe we could just either put an asterisk so that we they, we know what core means in our document. It includes electives or put five years slash ten semesters total. Either way, I don't think it matters.
Um, Madam Chair, I just did, I shared that document, uh, the mass core document uh, with the committee. So that you would have a link to that uh, in your email.
So Jackie, maybe just, yeah, make that note that 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 clarification needs to be made on that line item. Sharon, does that help?
I think the part that was, yes, the core part was confusing. I understand that now that that um, includes electives, but the five year, what is really throws me off because they have four years of high school. So when I look at that, I think they have to take five years of these core courses, but they're only there for four years. And that's the part that was throwing me off. Um, so it's more, it's clear to me to ta- is to say ten semesters worth of additional classes. Um, it's just the the, it was the language of the year and being a fifth year when kids are only there for four, that was really confusing to me.
I I'm wondering if it just makes more sense as we define the units. We are attempting to use the language that we were already familiar with because the, it was there. Maybe we just use the language of units and it clears that up. So it's not perceived as as the years.
Like two courses, but the problem is with science, like you said, it has to be three years worth.
Yeah, so I don't want to complicate it, but the way that the framework speaks is that a unit represents the full academic year or its equivalent. So if we switch, we wouldn't be switching all of them to reflect units. We would be only reflecting the additional courses and removing the core. Is that the request?
Think that what I was saying is that you could leave core as long as you put an asterisk on it. And then define that core includes electives.
We'll pull that, we can, I think we can pull that language straight over from the guidance documents on mass core.
And then I agree with Sharon. I think um, I mean, what you're ultimately saying is that they need five years, but what they really need is twenty credits of additional coursework. And so I wonder if you said three years and so like in the science line item, it would say three years equivalent to twelve credits. For five years equivalent to twenty credits. Maybe that would help clarify and and it's not an or, but an and.
I think we would have to do an and or, uh, because the math gets a little wonky with our lab sciences that are the six credit as opposed to the four credit classes. So it 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 can create imbalance for kids that do extra science classes. But I I think we can find the language to meet that.
So I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that I have this exact because if we're um, integrating those requests in anticipation of a vote for next meeting, um, would it be possible, Kirk, to like edit those in real time so that it's very clear as to what we're changing?
Sure. Can I, can I interject here a little bit? Cause like everyone else, this is, this was confusing to me. Could, can I request that the table's default measurement be credits rather than years? Cause at the bottom, at the end of the day, you need a certain number of credits to graduate, don't you?
Yeah, but that's where it gets tricky, Scott. So you have to understand that, yes, it is, it is credits, but it's also years which correlates to units depending on um, the course, the courses.
Until we started talking about this, I had no idea how many credits a course was.
Yeah, because it is, it varies, right? For science.
Dr. Boynton, do you want to talk to this piece?
I can. I think any of our students who are taking um, the what the, what the chart indicates is the the minimum. We need a minimum of four years of English. Now we need a minimum of four years of math. We need a minimum of three years of a lab science. Um, and tho- those students who ta- we could do like a range of of credits perhaps in the lab science area. Those students who are taking um, honors level biology, for example, will be at in a six-credit class because they will have class every day and then additional lab every other day. Those students taking AP Biology will be in an eight-credit class. That still counts as a single year, I believe.
Yeah, so the way it would work is if you took two courses like that, it would be twelve credits. But in the other science courses that are four, uh, four credits, you would take three of those courses to get to the same twelve credits.
Credits.
And that's not what the the mass core is because it's to say doing twelve credits of science in two years is the same as doing twelve credits of science over three years when the requirement is for them to be in a science class for three years, not for three, the equivalency of three classes. That's the complicated element.
But just to get over that hump, um, the science requirement in the mass core is a minimum of twelve credits for Neshoba. And so you could just say a minimum of twelve credits because some of our lab science classes are still just four. Um, some of the kids are going to take the advanced lab classes that go for six. So you could just say a minimum of twelve science credits across three years. Maybe use that column to be a little bit more descriptive and include years and credits.
Yeah, I I think in an effort to be simple, we're we're losing a lot of important detail. And you think you think you need both credits and years to understand what you need.
I just want to let Jillian weigh in.
Uh, Leah, you actually just just gave my exact suggestion, which was just going to be maybe if we had in that table, you know, if we called it units or credits and then specified, you know, for the science example, you know, twelve credits over a minimum of three years, you know, so then you are capturing that it needs to happen, you know, over a specific time horizon and also capturing maybe the credits. It might be a little bit easier for people to parse.
Does this document articulate anywhere, forgive me, that each that each course, each, that a year-long course is four credits at a minimum and a half-year course is two credits? That might be worth adding. I know it's in the handbook or excuse me, the course of studies, but it might be worth adding in here as maybe even just an asterisk at the bottom to say that some science classes are um, earn six credits full year. Science classes can earn anywhere between four and six credits. And that's what, and like the asterisk is pointing to the above.
Dr. Boynton, is that, that's extrapolated in the um, the course of studies, correct?
In the program of studies, yes.
In the program of studies.
Yes.
Yeah, but I think that just to, like, if we're going to be talking about credits and years, I think, and I'm a policymaker. I'm never looking at the program of studies. You might want to just make sure that it's clear what each class is worth because in Hudson, I think our classes are three credits. So it's it's variable across districts too, so it's not even a common number.
That's accurate. In some places, a full, a full year is five credits. Half year is two and a half, full year is one credit versus half credit. Every school district does it differently.
Yeah.
In terms of awarding, awarding credits. And I think that's where the standardization came in with the units um, through mass core because then it aligns with um, with UMass and our state school um, acceptance policy and um, admissions policy. That's where I think the units came from to standardize that across um, all of the high schools in Massachusetts.
Yeah, I'm fine doing it this way, but I think it needs to, you probably need to do years and credits and then just articulate at Neshoba, a full year class is four to six credits, half-year class is always two.
Madam Chair, may I bring the screen back up?
Yeah.
So how does this look in the notes column here where it's English? It's four years, minimum of sixteen credits. Mathematics, four years, minimum of sixteen credits. Science, minimum of twelve credits, la- laid out like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I sorry, I didn't raise my hand.
Go ahead, Amy. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Sharon. I'll get right back to you. Go ahead, Amy.
I think my preference is really just to stick with the term units because that's what's used in mass core and just explain what a unit is instead of years because I think that this, this adding the credits on the right-hand side will help, but I I do think other people are going to look at this document and have questions about the five years. But if you put five units, it's a little bit more clear. Or semesters or however we want to um, but mass core uses unit, like everything that I'm reading references a unit, so.
We actually, yeah. So we actually um, originally adopted this earlier in twenty twenty-five. I I don't remember if any of these um, concerns, like what was our rationale at that time for retaining the words years? Uh, I'm not sure if anyone remembers.
No. Can I just ask you a quick clarifying question before I go to Sharon? Um, Kate, is it actually sixteen credits of wellness or is it eight?
It is not sixteen credits of wellness.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you.
Two, four, five, I want to say six total credits, junior and senior year. It's one credit each. And freshman and sophomore, it's two credits, so six credits is a minimum.
Okay. Yeah, so like you have to take it for four years, but you're only getting six credits for those four years. So that's why I actually think this is the best way to do it because
I like it.
Um, if you're, if you're, if you're then saying you need twenty-five credits, then that gets a little wonky because you'll say, well, I took wellness and that was supposed to be a a unit. And now I'm down two credits. I I actually think we need both.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
relay people especially, but let me go to Sharon.
So I'm feeling like for the English, math, science, social studies, languages, um, the year is very clear. Um, with very, with a few exceptions, they're all year-long courses anyway. Some of them are one semester electives, but they fit cleanly into that year um, language. The wellness, I hadn't thought about that, but it's really what it is, is four semesters spread out over four years.
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct, Kate?
Essentially, yes, yeah.
Yeah, but but not always.
Not always. Two credits during your your freshman year, two credits during your sophomore year, one credit junior year, one credit senior year.
But Sharon, it can be um, day one, it can be like alternating days, so you take it for the full year, but you don't meet every day, right?
Right, right.
That can be weird.
Right. So that is a full year course though, i- in freshman and sophomore year.
Yeah, but only two credits.
Because it's every other day, right? Um, so that one's a little trickier. What really confuses me, I I'm sorry, I just that five, the extra five credits over five years is just, it's breaking my brain. I'm sorry. Um, is it ten semesters? Ten semesters worth oh spread over the four years?
It could be a full year class, like you could take art one, which is a full year class.
We could express it in this way and strike out the five years, but where it says additional core courses, minimum of twenty credits.
You just leave it blank.
And just leave it blank. And it ta- will take care of that concern because I I I I think it is. Since we have the ninety credit minimum in the in the the twenty-five per. I think we end up hitting that um when you add up these credits and Dr. Boynton cross-check me. Sixteen English, sixteen math. Twelve science. Twelve for three years of social studies, eight world languages. Four for fine and performing arts. Is that accurate, Dr. Boynton?
Yep, that would be the equivalent of two semesters worth, yep.
Uh, the business classes are four credits.
That's correct.
Uh, PE you explained would be a total of six credits. And then uh the additional twenty credits, that actually adds up to eighty-two credits. Out of those those columns, uh but by saying that ninety credits are minimum. That gives you the ability to add additional courses in other departments and it actually opens up opportunity. For kids to develop coursework uh aligned to their interests.
Yeah. Alright, so I'm sorry, I'm gonna jump in here and this is what always hurts my head when I'm helping my kids with their schedule. The fine and performing arts and the business tech applied arts line items. They can actually be part of those twenty credits, can't they?
Yes.
So that's weird and maybe this is what we can do. You, what you're basically saying is that.
So you could take band and chorus.
On these, on this table and the way Mass Core is written, is that that you would do an additional credits? So while you have. The. Fine arts and business here. That would be a minimum requirement there and additional course credits would be.
Yeah, but I don't, I think that if you add up all those credits, you're into like one ten.
It's eighty-two. So if you take from uh English all the way down to. Uh, additional core courses and add these credits up, these minimum credits, that's minimum credits of eighty-two.
Okay.
So that leaves room for two mo- two more four-credit classes of student choice. Of which these additional core courses would be student choice as well. So over the course of their experience, that would be. Six of those courses in terms of determining pathway. Outside of. What's standard in the departments.
Oh, go ahead, Sharon.
So can we put? So that we don't end up with a. Total in our right column that's less than the minimum. Can we put additional core course? And put um elective in that column too and then bump that up to. Twenty-eight credits? And then we get. Then our total in that right column adds up to the ninety minimum. It is kind of weird if our total adds up to eighty-two, but we require ninety minimum credits.
But is correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't that because the additional twenty credits has to meet? The specific academic standards in the core course.
So this is the the language on additional core courses to provide flexibility to students to take multiple electives and or additional court work. Coursework to fill specific interests. Career pathways, career technical education. So it would technically include under Mass Core language electives.
Is there anything that the kids get credit for that isn't coursework? Like EMT or? Because what Sharon is saying makes sense to me, but maybe that would then box somebody in.
Alyssa got it for jazz band, chorus, all of those. Um, extra after-school activities had credit. Or. Classes.
Yes.
So those were credits.
Those were credit bearing, yes.
And so if if Alyssa had to take twenty-eight additional credits. That would be forcing her to do more than she needs to. Cause she'd be well over the ninety minimum, even though she already is, but.
I think that I think it's. In that situation, though, those kids, like she was getting thirty-two credits or thirty credits a year. They they were so far over those kids that were doing that that. The minimum was irrelevant.
Yeah, but I'm wondering about kids where the minimum isn't irrelevant, where they really are just like scraping to get to ninety, but like maybe a work study. Gives them eight credits over the course of two years and then like. Then they don't have to take courses to get those eight credits. They're doing work study. So having that discrepancy, I think is fine, is my point. I'll put in the chat, but there's a link. Um, I know that there's the document that we've been referencing, but there's also the. Core framework which has additional information um at the bottom that might be relevant to our conversation. Alright, let's go to Scott.
Yes, I have a couple of things. So first of all, with respect to this credit issue, I keep doing the math and I'm pretty sure the required, it adds up to seventy-eight before you get to the additional line. Um, but um. As far as what the, as far as the additional line is concerned, is there some prescription that says that has to be twenty credits of additional work? Or are we just trying to say you need to take enough credits so that you reach the nineties? So should the additional line just be saying instead of twenty minimum, it says? The whatever credits are required to reach ninety?
Kirk or Kate, I'll let you guys answer that one.
I'm going back and forth between the program of studies actually from this past year and and. And Kirk, I'm not sure if you have. Thoughts on Scott's. Suggestion. Right now, I know most of our students end up graduating with more than ninety credits. Um, the ninety credits. Is um something that where a student is enrolled in twenty-five credits a year. It allows a little bit of wiggle room for some students who may struggle and we they may need to do um some additional coursework, maybe um. Doubling up on a year to make up some credits to meet that ninety credit threshold. The vast majority of our students. Who are enrolled in twenty-five credits or more and uh in the case of Ms. Puck's daughter, up to even thirty credits. Some of those had to be after school, um those credit bearing. EMT and or music classes because they can't fit it in. That ninety credits. Allows students who may struggle to still have that time in their schedules over the four years in order to meet that ninety credit. Threshold, um if that makes sense, it's sort of that. Um, it's a benchmark that is right squarely in the middle where our high achieving students will su- surpass it and it's achievable. For students who may who may struggle um while keeping that twenty-five credit minimum. We did find when we came back. To you a couple of years ago and asked to increase the credits to twenty-five, we were finding that our students with the twenty-three credit minimum per year. Were struggling to meet the ninety credit graduation requirement. So now that we have, we're back at twenty-five, we're finding that most of our students. Are now able to meet that ninety credits with the twenty-five credit minimum um. To be considered full-time um as a student and I am not sure um I I honestly could go either way. I just wanna make sure that this policy is clear. For our students and our families.
I guess the question becomes, what's the purpose of the line that says additional courses? Like if, because down below, there's a bullet that says every student expected to take twenty-five credits. So why it's kind of like. Do we need that line that says additional courses or is it just need to say that the credit graduation credit requirement is ninety?
This, this is a line that exists within the Mass Core. I think it's theirs language to just explain. It wasn't on our previous um policy. I I'll I'll point out the difference in terms of what we're talking about pragmatically today and what this policy will do. Is it adds a year of math? So, so. And this additional core course was just to try to define that beyond. So Mr. Powell, if your recommendation is to to eliminate that line, um. I don't have an issue with that. It was uh to make it reflect how the Mass Core was written.
I don't think it's adding anything, so my suggestion would be to take that line away. I don't know how the rest of the committee feels.
Well, I mean, the ma- the Mass Core framework says, does have a line item that says additional core courses, five units.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, and then it and then it references in the framework of, it says other additional coursework. Or any of the above. We didn't keep, we didn't retain that, but.
And and I'll remind the committee that the Mass Core is the recommendation from the department. It is not a regulation. So it's not a requirement of us.
So I mean, I would assume that in order to get those five units, the kids would have to take coursework. Um, I'm just trying to imagine programming that would allow kids to amass. The graduation credit minimum without actually meeting this additional course requirement.
They really wouldn't. If you meet ninety credits, you you meet that additional course.
Yeah.
Of twenty credits because you're taking twenty-five credits a year.
But are some of those, do we have work study? Do we have? Like, did they take just like sci- like a ton of sciences at the six-credit total?
They take a variety of of coursework. They 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 could double up on an on art. On business, that happens a lot. Um, we don't currently have work study, but we're working towards that. Um, and certainly as a credit bearing option. Um, when we explore and continue our pathways, um those students will be engaging in internships that are credit bearing and capstone projects, so. Um, but our students who are enrolled in the the minimum twenty-five credits are earning, if they're passing all those classes, they're earning. A hundred credits, uh which is ten above the ninety.
So maybe we just eliminate that bottom line and make sure that the minimum is there. How do you got, can I, sorry, Jackie, what? I think how it's currently on the screen is the clearest. So removing the second to last line with the additional course, core course. Because it. Then it just feeds up that this is your credit, the credit total. Can I get a thumbs up on just eliminating that line item? How to, do you wanna direct the policy subcommittee that way? Can you show me your thumbs? If you're looking that way or thumbs down if you don't? Amy? Yeah. It's okay. Um, okay, so there you go, policy subcommittee. Go ahead, Scott.
There's one more thing I'd like to get a little more clarity on. That's the mathematics line. I I guess I'm a little puzzled here, like, are we saying four years is now required or I I guess this whole thing's a little, it's a little puzzling to me because. Cause then the comment says a math course during senior year is recommended. Well, if we're saying that you have to take math all four years, it's not really recommended. It's actually required, so. What's the, what's the, what's the message?
Uh, Mr. Powell, I think that's because Mass Core is the recommendation, which is why that language was like there. So I think that's a good point.
To eliminate that language, Kirk?
Yeah.
Is that okay, Scott?
I I think that makes sense, yes.
Um, I like Mass Core's framework. It's great and all, but what I like to go by as a parent is UMass's. Requirements. So and I know that our counseling department just goes, they use Mass Core, but they they say, they talk about UMass's requirements because they're pretty baseline. And UMass wants four years of math. Um, so I think that's a good move.
Leah.
Yeah.
I am on their website right now and UMass, cause I noticed the same thing when my kids were applying to school that. UMass had different requirements than what our um. Program of studies said. So for me, this is all really helpful to get it all like sorted out and eliminate some of the confusion for parents going forward, but. When you go on UMass's website, it says mathematics, algebra two minimum. Four units, including math in the senior year of high school.
Yeah.
And Mass Core also had that reference to the senior year in high school, so I just. I'm a little um concerned about removing that maybe the solution is. Getting rid of recommended, just say.
Yeah.
Including a senior year course.
Yeah. Or just four years of math are required. Because four years, it's not, you can't double up freshman and sophomore year and not take it junior and senior.
So I would just ask the committee then for consistency purposes in the document. English is also four years. Would you write a sentence that says English is required for seniors?
Yeah, because it doesn't say that on the. I'm not an expert here. I'm just checking those two websites and it doesn't say it on either of those websites, but.
I'm just talking about inconsistency of our policy document.
Well.
Calling out math for seniors when we say four years means you have to take a freshman, sophomore, senior, junior, senior year. If we're saying that in English. And then it also says four years for math. Doesn't that mean the same thing?
I- is it because some students are taking algebra two in eighth grade? And some are taking freshman? Does that, is that why they're saying you need the fourth math course in senior year?
Nope.
No, because the kids who don't take it.
Geometries of freshmen or algebra one. Um, it's still four years.
I think be as consistent as possible and I think that. The mass, UMass framework does not say that English has to be taken in the senior year, but I actually think that. Philosophically, I believe it should. I wouldn't wanna see kids not taking English class senior year, cause that's where they learn to write.
Should we really be prescribing these things for every student, even ones that don't intend to go to college?
I would argue that English is the one, like I would even let go of social studies and I'm a social studies teacher. I think English is the one. That we want kids taking every year.
I agree that it's something they should do. I don't think it's something we should require by policy.
Okay, so um, let's say this, do, cause if we leave it without the prescription. They would still have to take four years. They would just be able to double up if they wanted to. Or we could put in the prescription and force them to take it senior year. So those I think are the two choices. Because math, they have to take it senior year. Because UMass requires it. Which is, I think, what the standard we should be using. English, they don't say it.
Again, you're 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 using UMass under the assumption that all the students are gonna go to college.
Um, I feel like we're getting, this is getting into the weeds, though, like if. The major change was that it used to say three years for math and now it says four, so then that's. That I think that was why at some point there was the addition of math because it's, it wasn't required previously.
Does that take care of that question?
Minimum of one course per year in school. That's one option. Can you guys give a thumbs up if you want to prescribe that for English?
And then we would just apply it on the other lines as well. Well, I guess it would just be English and math.
Oh, Kate, did you wanna weigh in?
Right now, our our English courses are semester and so.
Yeah.
I may, I may want to amend that to say minimum of, if we're going this route to have English match math, minimum of one course. And we don't have semester math classes right now, minimum of one course. Or two semesters per year because our our senior classes are semester-based. For English right now.
We've been, we've been looking over this document um. With input from Superintendent Downing, um Dr. Boynton. Assistant Superintendent Friend, so I I do wanna caution that I feel like we're moving pretty. Like. If we're gonna make these really significant changes, um. I'm I'm just concerned. My power's about to die, so I'm gonna go off camera for a second. Oh, okay. Shandor, go ahead.
Uh, I I share the concern of Jackie of making too.
Uh, I I share the concern of Jackie of making too many changes of new requirements, but. Uh, just for clarification, what happens if a student fails one of these classes? That are required for four years and all that.
They need to make up those credits and there's a number of different ways for them to do it. Um, most, most common is summer school. Um, but we do have occasions where students will double up and take, let's say, a student didn't pass English nine, they would double up on English nine and ten. Um, occasionally on that, but most often it's summer school for credit recovery.
Okay. Alright, so guys, um, I get the, I get the comment about getting into the weeds, but I honestly think that this is one of the most important things. We do. So I think we probably need to just spend a couple more minutes on it, but I'm wondering, can we just see the language that Kirk put into the English row? Can you give me a thumbs up if you want to require that English is taken all each of the four years? Thumbs up if you want it to happen or thumbs down, you wanna give more flexibility? Okay. Sharon, do you have an opinion? Cuz I'm seeing a lot of thumbs down. Julian's kind of neutral and Shondur's down. So it looks like we're heading, you're muted, Sharon. You don't care. It's like meh. Okay, so I feel like, um, Kirk, we're gonna let English be more flexible and math is the one. Guys, if, um, should we prescribe math be taken in the senior year? Are you guys, do you want to require that, just like UMass does? Or do you wanna allow for more flexibility? I'm not seeing every thumb. So Shondur's down, Scott's down, Amy? You're muted.
I'm thumbs up just because it's consistent with what I see in mass core, so.
Okay. Robin wants to keep it with. UMass, Amy, you said you wanna, you wanna prescribe the senior year math class? Yeah. Jackie, what do you say?
I would like to stick with what we presented in the meeting minute, uh, materials.
Did it originally say that? We would force math in the senior year?
I think that the language said that it was recommended, but it provides flexibility.
Okay, so Jackie's with flexibility. Alright, so how many of you guys wanna just leave the recommended language and allow for flexibility? So I see one, two. Scott, what do you say?
I I'm struggling with what all this means as far as. You know, is this all a requirement for graduation or not? And if it's a requirement and four years is required, I guess, does it matter? Are we saying it doesn't matter when it happens or are we saying you need to take it in your senior year?
So I think what Jackie recommended is that we just make it clear that it's highly recommended they take one in the senior year, but they could double up and take. Two during the junior, junior year.
And or that, again, with the language that's on the original document, that they can all, there's, there's flexibility to substitute the computer science. Course for one, for one year, one unit.
And that was recommended by the mass core?
Yes.
Alright, so do you guys wanna keep the math language the way that it is and allow flexibility? One more time, thumbs up or thumbs down, please? Alright, I'm seeing a lot of thumbs up for that, Jackie. Um, I feel like we're nearing the end on this, but I actually have one more issue. I'm so sorry. Um, I'm wondering why you are requiring world history when all of the other stuff only says US history?
Again, it comes into. Mass core framework. Mass core points to US history and world history. So if we want to align to the mass core, we would include world history.
Matt, I know you've had your hand up for a while. Is it possible to have his input?
Um, yeah. Matt, was your input on English or?
Mine was on, um, I know within the mass core, within world language, it's two years of the of the same language. Um, and I guess one of one of my questions was if a student were to take like Spanish one year. Switch to a different language cuz Spanish, it wasn't their thing, they moved to a different language. Would they, per this policy, would they be required to take that same language another, another year, so three years of. World language, um, to meet the requirement? Or was that, is that then, is that then fall into the exemption portion as a possibility?
Dr. Boyton, you wanna do that one?
Absolutely, I can do that one. Most of the time, students would take the two years of the same language, so if they, for example. Spanish one, Spanish was not their language, they moved to French, they found success in French one, they would need to move on to French two. We would look in rare circumstances for um, for exemptions, and I think there's language at the bottom of. The policy below the chart to account for those very rare um, exceptions. We also have students. Uh, who may qualify for a language waiver in rare circumstances for different reasons. Um, so we would take those on a case by case basis with myself and the guidance director, but by and large. Those students, um, who maybe switched to language after freshman year would then take the same language their sophomore and junior year. Um, and um, that that's by and large what would happen.
Thank you.
Any other questions about this? Trying to see everybody. Alright, I don't think so. So perhaps we are. Uh, where we need to be on this? And policy, do you feel like, Jackie, do you feel like you um, have everything that you need to make those adjustments? I know Kirk's been doing it in real time for you.
Right, that's how I'm gonna lean on those edits that everybody can see in real time as being the most accurate.
Okay, great. Alright, thank you to Dr. Boyton too for all of your help. In getting us through that, we appreciate it. Oh, I I know what I wanted to ask. Kirk, um, because this policy is dependent upon the competency determination. I would um, like to have these, those two policies second reading. I mean, don't you think that it's a little weird to approve this one before we know what the competency determination is, or do you think that that's okay?
I think it's, I think it's okay cuz the competence and determination is 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 just around that competency. We noted in here. We've acknowledged that we have to meet the competency determination. That's all we really have to do in the graduation requirements. So then the competence and determination is then after that. That being said, we're bringing competence and determination to you at the next meeting, so. We're gonna, we we will have time to have our work completed by the end of the year, by the end of the calendar year.
Alright, so maybe this is what we'll do on that agenda, is we will have the first reading of the competency determination before we vote. On this policy, just in case. And so we can, will, this, this second reading of this of IKF should not be in the consent agenda. Let's put it in its own vote.
It was always gonna be.
Oh, it was, okay, cuz you need to have the roll call. Um, so let's make sure that that happens after the competency determination first reading, so that there's no hiccup there.
Yep.
And also, would it be possible if um, school could, school committee members have um, more specific feedback? After they read through the materials, it would not be to engage in any kind of correspondence, but to maybe have those front loaded would be helpful.
And to send them to you, Jackie, you mean?
Yeah, that would be really great.
Okay, so if the materials are posted, guys, a couple of days in advance, if you go through them. And you have maybe questions that Jackie could just field for you. Um, one-on-one, then that's probably okay.
Or just even send me your questions so that then we can be prepared to know who should field what questions um, in our meeting.
Excellent. Alright, guys, we're moving the agenda now to finance and operations, so I'll turn over to uh, Kirk or and or Ross.
We'll just go straight to uh, Mr. Mulcaren, Assistant Superintendent Finance Operations and Safety.
Uh, good evening, everyone again. Uh, so. The first two reports I'm presenting to the school committee this evening will bring closure to our review of the end of FY twenty-five. Uh, the first report I'm presenting is the revolving report. Um, Ms. Masterson, if you would mind pulling that up for us. Uh, so as that's happening, um, just noting that this was reviewed with budget and warrant subcommittee uh, at their meeting last week. So for those of you who have been on the committee, just a refresher and to to new folks as well, revolving accounts live outside of the operating budget. Although you'll see within our annual budgets, we often use them for uh, budgetary offsets. So revolving fund uh, separately accounts for specific non-operating revenues that come into the district. And it allows for the expenditure for specific purposes, and you'll see that we've created notes on the right-hand side of this document over time. To make sure that people are aware of what each account is for. So uh, there's specific revenues that come in and specific reasons to ex- uh. Or specific areas to spend those, those funds on. Uh, so essentially the revolving is the inflow of the revenue and the outflow of the expenditure. Um, and they can't be expended for um, things otherwise stated, and you can't put revenue in uh, that is not otherwise stated, so. We present these revolving funds in sort of chunks, so I'll begin by talking about the top section and then break it down from there. So the first cluster uh, is essentially our general revolving funds. Uh, these are sort of typical for most school districts. So our custodial uh, is our, under our facilities department, revenue comes in from. From rentals and goes out towards expenditures, most often offsets. Uh, you'll see that some of the expenditure is higher this year. That's because of the boiler situation at Sawyer. Um, some of you will recall, especially Bolton residents, that that we did pay for that out of the revolving. And actually, our revenue back on that and the reimbursement from the town of Bolton came in after July one because it was ratified at their town meeting in the spring. So that's actually a much higher balance at this point already. So Circuit Breaker is the one I'm gonna spend the most amount of time on. Um, so uh, this is uh, the account where we receive our state reimbursement uh, through the Circuit Breaker program like all school districts do. Uh, Circuit Breaker allows the district to receive a partial reimbursement on IEP services and programs. That are above the state threshold per pupil. In the past, it's been about fifty thousand uh, dollars per student. And we typically get anywhere from upwards of seventy-five percent over that threshold back. Um, it's been as low as forty-something percent for transportation for those students and um, and higher as well. So in FY twenty-five, we received approximately one point seven million dollars in reimbursement. Uh, we had budgeted the need to use one point six, um, but because of the expenditures that came in over expected budget. We ended up using approximately two point six uh, instead of the one point six. So that leaves our remaining balance around one, uh, hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, the good news is that we feel comfortable this would be bolstered back to approximately eight hundred thousand or more by the end of the year. Uh, we'll receive about two point six million in revenue. Uh, from the Circuit Breaker program this year. We already have been given that figure from the state. And we have a two million dollar budget offset committed to special education funding. So with all the, the, the ups and downs and the, the escalation of. Special education costs, we feel like our Circuit Breaker. Uh, account will be more or less back to where it was at the end of FY twenty-four, at the end of FY twenty-six, which is good news. School choice, as the committee knows, we've had more school choice students in recently. So that's where that funding comes in, um, and we can expend it on things uh, for offsets for the budget. Uh, tuition and transportation is a rather unique account. We currently only use it. For if we have tuition or trans- excuse me, transportation for students who may go to an agricultural. Uh, we service that uh, transportation and they get reimbursed by the descending town. So you can see why that's uh, essentially the inflow and outflow was the same. Uh, preschool, we do use this uh, account where we take in our preschool tuitions. To help offset some of our preschool staff salaries, uh, whether they're teachers or instructional assistants. And you can see from uh, last year, essentially what we brought in, we spent on those staff, so it's got a nice. Stable uh, savings balance, uh, and we'll look to do the same this year, obviously. Lost textbooks, uh, textbooks come in, you know, um, excuse me, textbook revenue comes in. When those books are lost, uh, it had built up over time and last year. Uh, we did use it to offset some one-time curriculum purchases. Uh, we are not uh, earmarked for that in FY twenty-six, so you will not see that next time uh, of year on this same report. Uh, Ms. Masterson, could you scroll down just a little bit and just bring E-Rate to the very top of the screen? So E-Rate is a federal program, um, where portions of your cable bill, if you still have cable and other sources. Go to fund E-Rate, and what that does is provides discounts for school districts on their technology expenditures, such as our. Uh, our fiber line, uh, and certain equipment purchases. We are basically expected to spend what we bring in, and you can see that we did that here. Uh, the following set is all gift accounts uh, at our specific schools. This is typical across the Commonwealth. Uh, one thing that I will note is you can see that we have some healthy balances here. And that we'll be meeting with the principals in the next couple of weeks, and one of the agenda items is to talk about spending some of these things down. Not all the way cuz they don't wanna to bring it to zero, but for those who have a little bit of a healthier balance. Uh, it's good to know that they have some um, expenditures that they can make. And uh, for those who do not, uh, it's good to know that they, they can build those up if they bring in gift money, um, or that they might be used in the future. Uh, the SAT, excuse me, FSAT uh. Has not been used uh, in the past year. That's for prep courses, uh, that was not um, uh, done through the high school. Uh, the, you'll see a little bit further on in the guidance department. That's when they bring in the revenue from the actual. Uh, fees that kids take or pay to take those cor- those tests. And those, uh, that account is also used to pay those, um, pay for those tests and then uh, whatever else is needed for the guidance department. Graduation, that's exactly what it is, so we sell tickets for graduation and pay for the expenses for graduation. Uh, the EMT program also uh, is explained here, as well as the parking um, fees that come in. Over time, this had built up quite a bit, so last year we did use as an offset to help with some of the snow and ice removal at the high school. Uh, the, the revenue from that comes in from the parking fees that students pay. Whether it's for the full year or for three months, however long they have their license, uh, their junior or senior year, uh, but they do pay to park on campus. So that's the sort of the general revolving account, so before I go into anything else, are there any questions on those?
Can you just review very quickly the guidance one, one more time?
Yeah, sure, so that, guidance can use that. They bring in the revenues from uh, the fees that get paid. Um, and then also they, they pay for the uh, the tests, but also they. They would use that for things like bringing in speakers. Um, I could get more specifics from Mrs. Beck, but. You know, that's where they would bring in speakers on, you know, um, student loans or financing college. Or, you know, how to choose a college or any of the fairs or things like that that they have.
So did, when we pay for eight, like. Um, SATs when we pay for, well, not SATs, but when we pay for AP exams. I'm just wondering where all the guidance revenue comes from.
Uh, my understanding is that some of it is the testing. I could get more specific with that and bring it back to either this group or budget and warrant.
Yeah, I just think it's a pretty big number, so it caught my eye.
Yep.
Alright, I'm trying to see if anybody else has any other questions. I don't think so, so we can keep going, Ross.
Yep, no problem. Okay, so the next set of accounts is our athletic revolving funds. Um, so the first set, that's really essentially our gate receipts that come in. Um, so uh, you know, from when you pay to go in and you pay your ticket. Uh, over time, that's what's expended. Um, the main purpose of that we use is to offset some of our track debt. Uh, in meeting with Ms. Rich and budget preparations, we may increase that offset. Uh, moving forward, but we'll have to take a look to make sure we're trending um. Well, over time, but we've built up a good balance, so I feel like we may be able to increase that offset. Uh, the rest are the building-based um, athletic accounts. And also we'll be doing more offsets for transportation from those accounts, um, as those costs have gone up. Um, but they're, they're carrying um, decent balances in some places. Um, but again, it's all dependent upon uh, what the needs are uh, of the students from year to year. Uh, for what, where they're going and where their, where their meets or their competitions or games are. Any questions on the athletics?
Not seeing any. Keep it going.
Yep. So our extended learning uh, account, obviously that's for our before and after-school childcare program that we run in-house. Uh, this information would obviously be shared as part of the RFP. We do use a lot of the revenue, obviously, to run the program, but then also offsets on utilities and then some insurance to make sure that those things are also being covered from the extended learning program. So you can see the revenues that came in, just over seven hundred thousand in our expenses across the year as well. So our balance built up a little bit. And again, we'll look to see how that impacts the R F P. And regardless of the R F P, we look at this during budget season as well. Are there any questions on the extended learning program from a financial perspective?
Not seeing any.
And our last one, I added this this year for a couple of different reasons. Number one is that typically you'll see some financial information as part of the operating budget presentations. We sort of put it at the end just to make people aware what the budget is for for food services. But I think it's important to report on this annually and obviously, number two, being with a contract for the food service director, I thought it was important to bring this in. So it came up during budget season, but a couple of things I want to point out is number one, the contracted services. So in previous years, our contracted services was minimal. But our provisions and supplies was very high as far as expenditures. Our contract with Witson's, they provide and do the procurement of provisions. So their contract, while we have a food service director, the entirety of the contract also has them bringing in all of our food service procurement as a as the manager of the the program. The salaries are obviously to our employees, as well as the health insurance is for those employees who are food service member, or excuse me, food service employees who take our benefits. So that the operating budget is not paying for food service employees' share of that's that that percentage that the the district pays on their health insurance. Food service provisions and supplies is a lot lower because again, those are within the contract. We pay Witson's on a monthly basis and everything is within there. A couple of other things, the cafeteria equipment. This is where you can look to see how we're doing with spending down our surplus. Members of the committee who've been here for a few years know that we need to spend down that surplus, that balance over time. So I can report that we have been able to start spending that down. Prior to Witson's, we were actually building that up, and that's the exact opposite direction that Desi Food Nutrition wants us to go. So we're headed now in the right direction. We've actually paid our employees more last year than in the year before. We're now covering the health insurance for them within the food services budget. And we're definitely delivering a much better program to our students. So overall, from a fiscal standpoint, healthy, but also the program execution was strong last year. Any questions on the food services revolving?
Not seeing any hints.
Great. So the last report for F Y twenty five is the treasurer's report as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. So just to remind the committee members who've been on and for new members, this isn't the money that we carry always day to day. This is a snapshot at one particular time. I'll talk a little bit about each of these accounts and sort of cluster them through a little bit. The quick one I want to talk about is TD Bank. I spoke with our treasurer after budget and warrant. We've had that open for a little while. It doesn't carry a lot. There's some concern about closing it in case a vendor payment hits that. We wouldn't want it to be closed. It would sort of wreak havoc for a little bit on our own books. So I do believe we can now run a report out of our software to ensure that nobody is lined up to get that get get paid out of TD Bank. So we should be able to close that during this fiscal year. The Clinton Savings Bank, so our general operating, we we have some money within that, as well as our student activities are run through Clinton Savings Bank as well. M M D T, where you can see there's a more significant amount of cash. So as we take in our assessments from the town, they're placed in the M M D T, which is Mass Municipal Depository Trust. Also within that account is our M S B A revenue, so that's also within there as well. And again, it makes really good interest, which you saw on the revenue report last month. So most of the revenue that we receive from interest earnings is from that account. So it does behoove us to keep money in there. UniBank at the very top of the screen is sort of really where we do most of our our paying for any payables for vendors. That's where we pay our payroll out of. So at any given day, that will be higher or lower depending upon our warrant cycle. The second or well, more, one of the last ones I'll cover is Hometown. That's just where some of our food services revenue goes from parent payments. The Bartholomew account, that is something we opened a few years ago. That holds all of our bond money for the high school project and also why that's so high. And then lastly, O P E B, that is the trust account that offsets our O P E B liability and that continues to build as well. Are there any questions on the treasurer's report?
Not seeing any.
Fantastic. We will now jump back into F Y twenty six. So this is the October operating report, the end of October. There's no major changes in forecasting at this point or expenditures. Again, it's too early to really know where our facilities will land. We just sort of turned the heat on a few weeks ago. And again, with special education substitutes, it's a little bit too early to know and with athletics as well. The majority of the four sixty-two that's there is due to surplus on salary differentials from last year to this year. As you know, when people retire and we hire new people, there's typically a salary differential, but the more majority of that is there. I've also updated the footnotes with budget and warrants recommendation to just make sure there's a little bit more specific. But that money that's surplus in insurance and benefits comes from that change in rate that was after the budget vote. When we went back to to sort of do a last ditch effort to negotiate with Maya on our increase and we picked up some pilot programs for wellness, that money, essentially that surplus is paying for those deans of students positions that are now back in the budget where you might see a deficit in those accounts. The the sort of the differential on that is washed out through that surplus and insurance and benefits. And then also the curriculum line, our teaching and learning line with the tutors. We're paying for tutors because a big portion of our literacy coaches is now covered by Prism. So again, these things offset each other and allow us to do some dynamic things for early literacy through that grant. But that explanation, those explainers are there for the very purposes that I just said.
All right, any questions on this report? All right, not seeing any, Ross. So thank you so much for that detail and for that great explanation. We appreciate it.
Thank you as well.
All right, everybody. So one item on our unfinished business, and that is the twenty-six, twenty-seven district calendar. So Kirk, I think I'll turn it over to you. You can present the drafts that you have provided in the materials.
You bet. So as you know, last week, what I brought forward to you that we need to sort of advance our calendar timeline a little bit and advance the calendar next year by week. And then we also discussed early release days being on Fridays or possibly Wednesdays. And the committee gave us a task to go back and provide three calendars, a calendar with Fridays, a calendars with Wednesdays. And then also a hybrid calendar to identify those days, those Fridays with the highest absentee rate, and we make those Wednesdays. So Ms. Murdock is here to present those calendars to you. You have them in your materials. I think, Jessica, we can just go through one calendar calendar to explain it. And then what we need from the committee tonight, Madam Chair, is is maybe just a poll, some direction on which calendar you would like us to bring forward ultimately for a vote for approval, unless you think it's worthy to do that this evening. Okay, so Ms. Murdock, we'll turn it over to you.
All right. Well, thank you Superintendent Downing, and thank you to the school committee. As Superintendent Downing shared, we had presented three calendars. I wanted to take a moment to point out that we are proposing an earlier start to the school year, and that's due to the construction schedule and the needs of the of the construction. And additionally, due to state primary elections, we have proposed a full day of professional development, and you'll see that in September on the Tuesday. I'm just moving my screen, September first. And we will make sure that there's no conflict related to that professional professional development day with our voters based on our needs there. You'll notice all of the days listed color-coded for the start of the the year. We have the first day of school on the twenty-sixth. We have the first day of kindergarten on the twenty-seventh and pre-K first day of school on the twenty-eighth. You'll see the early release days are highlighted in red. Our holidays and vacation breaks are noted in orange and green. We have early release parent-teacher conferences, yellow. And we have full-day parent-teacher conferences in blue. And then we have our high school high school days for midterms and finals notated. And we have early, no kindergarten incoming screening for kindergarten in May. And then the last day of school based on our hundred and eighty days versus if we had a five, five snow day need, which would bring us to June tenth and June seventeenth. So I will pause there and see if there is any questions that you may have.
All right, anybody have anything they'd like to weigh in on? So this really does come down to the reverse half-days. I had a question for you guys from a constituent, wondering why, I think, do we have seven half-days? Half, P D half-days? So there's, sorry, one, two.
Excuse me, yes, it's seven half-days for professional development.
Yes. So somebody asked why it would be a good idea to do half-days as opposed to full days, like reducing that and just making them full-day P Ds?
Well, the half-day P Ds allow us to count that as the day of school as well, so we can meet the one hundred eighty days, nine hundred hours for elementary, nine hundred ninety for high school.
Any other thoughts about the reverse half-days, guys? And which Wednesday or Friday? Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, so I definitely like the idea of doing a mix of Wednesday and Fridays as an opportunity to get more data about, you know, if Wednesdays do improve attendance versus Fridays without fully committing to it. So that's my perspective.
Thanks, Scott. Let's go to Matt.
I was kind of, kind of second like what what Scott was saying. I think the the data collection is important in terms of like attendance, because I know that was an issue that we had talked about. Also, like in looking through the lens of like your educators, I mean, the purpose of the half-day is for professional development for educators. And looking at in terms of like what they also would work best for our educators, you know, having a full week of of working and teaching, followed by a half-day on Friday. Now that lasts the half-day, students are gone. I'm still there after a full week of working, going into P D. Is a Wednesday a better opportunity for educators than to come back the next day on Thursday or Friday, practice what you learn in the P D? Or to have that discourse and conversation with your colleagues where it's on a Friday, you can lose some of that over the weekend. And now it's like, I had the P D, but it's more impactful in that middle of the week, as we're kind of like like chunking the week on two ends. I would definitely say the more data we can gather on this would help in future decisions when it comes to like looking at that calendar and what was best for both, you know, educators as as well as students.
Thanks, Matt. Let's hear from Jackie.
Sorry. I understand that the calendar has to satisfy many consumers and recipients of said calendar. I do think it's important to think about continuity for educators and for students. I do think that having Friday P D is less disruptive to our younger students. Having a midday, half-day can be very disruptive to some of the younger students. And I do think that, I don't know that it's appropriate for any conversations for this year, but it would be interesting to talk about and explore full-day P D versus half-day, knowing what the research says about how beneficial that is, not only for the educators, but for the long-term outcomes of our students. So I understand the current rationale and that's just something to consider in the future.
Thanks, Jackie. Go ahead, Amy.
May I comment on that, Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Kirk, yep.
What would, just so the community would know, if if there was any interest to do additional P D days, you would be lengthening your educator contract. And so by lengthening the educator contract, you would have to make that an investment. And I just want to make that clear.
Because right now, the contract allows for one hundred and eighty teaching days plus how many additional teacher days?
I believe it's four additional days.
Okay, Amy.
Yeah, I just wanted to share that the strong preference of the constituents I reached out to and the families was for Fridays. And so I just want to put that out, you know, that I think because of work schedules that have already been arranged and even some activity schedules that have been kind of planned, like I know the Bolton ski club takes advantage of two Friday half-days to extend the ski time. Almost everybody I talked to strongly prefers the Fridays. However, I I think it's important that we recognize that the mission of the school committee and the and the district is, you know, to educate students. And, you know, Wednesdays might accomplish keeping more kids present in school with the added benefit of, you know, Matt's perspective that Friday afternoon professional development sessions present challenges for teachers too, which I I really hadn't considered before. One thing that I was, I guess, as a committee, I'm hoping that we could think about for our planning calendar next year is like if we're going to be making a change to half-days or any kind of other substantive change, if we could kind of like bump up the timeline a little bit just to help people plan out their work schedules and travel schedules, all that kind of stuff. I I think we used to vote these two years in advance or two two calendars at a time. This feels like a little bit late to me to be switching things up for next year, but yeah, that that's all.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
I think we're doing an incredibly responsible job of getting giving plenty of notice. This calendar will be approved nine months prior to the start of the school year, which I think is ample time for people to plan their calendars and set their dates for their to the course of of the needs that they have. Doing it any farther out from that, we have had to come back and do many calendar amendments because the state decides to set election dates or other conditions come up that we have to adjust for. So I think doing one calendar year is the responsible thing, and I think doing this nine months ahead of time prior to the start of school is ample planning time for anyone in our community.
Yeah, I mean, I I understand that, Kirk. I mean, it's certainly ample time for my Viverito planning. Maybe we don't vacation enough, but I think that for some people, there are legitimate things that are getting kind of messed up because of this, but here's what I would put on the table for anybody listening is that we have an extraordinary situation happening right now in our district with the construction of a beautiful new high school. That is what is driving much of this conversation around the start date and the end date. So that's unique. It will hopefully, it's it's really about the demolition of the current building, which is incredibly exciting and making sure that as many kids are as far away from that demolition as possible. It's not going to be perfect, but that's also at play. So we spent a lot of time talking about the half-days and the P D stuff, but that start starting in time is really getting screwed up by the construction stuff. So I I really thank everybody's patience through this process. It's just one more thing we need to manage in an effort to bring about this really amazing thing for our communities. Yeah. So Amy? Is that an old hand?
No, just one more um question about Wednesday half days because. Um. Would this be an opportunity for looking at whether extended day programs could be? Offered for students who? Like for the younger kids who might have parents who've already were in arranged work schedules to. Um, you know, work from home on Fridays. Like I think that the Wednesday half day presents some some. Obstacles for families with young kids who. Need to arrange childcare where they may not have had to before. So one of the, one of the ideas that I saw expressed or or suggested was. You know, if we could come up with some kind of afternoon. Immortum program that was offered to the younger students that might kind of solve this whole, all the objections I've been hearing about moving to a Wednesday half day.
Food for thought?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Jillian.
I was just curious, um, since Kirk brought up needing to extend um the teacher contract. Those four days that are built in now are, what are they used for? Just sort of out of curiosity.
Uh, they're built in and I I may have misspoke there. It's um, we have our two days before the s- school year begins and then we have the one professional development day. Sometimes that Jillian, I walk back into my past when I worked in other districts and draw those numbers out of my head. But it's two before the school year starts and then we have professional development day in March. On the calendar you're looking at. The professional um uh development day will come on that election day, that first Tuesday in September.
Okay, that makes sense. And then like when they um have like full day conferences, is that sort of included that is one of their?
Oh, yes. Pardon me, that that actually is the the eighty, the fourth day is the full day. Because the other days are half day conferences.
Okay, and then my last question on this is when the teachers have their evening conferences. Um, i- is that somehow built into their contract as well?
That's written into the negotiated agreement.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Any other questions about this? All right, so Kirk, I heard you say that you would like us to maybe. Identify the one we're leaning toward to then present it for a motion the next time we're together.
Yeah, so it it however you want to do that, Madam Chair, if you want to. Poll the committee on the options, then we'll, we have a sense of which one you want us to bring forward for a vote.
So um, guys, we'll go through each one. The three options are the hybrid of Wednesday, Friday mix. Just Wednesday or just Friday half day. Otherwise, everything else I think is the same on the three calendars. So the first one up is the hybrid. How many of you guys are leaning toward the hybrid? Just give me a thumbs up. So Kirk, I'm seeing one, two, three. Or five? How many of you guys are leaning toward just Fridays? Seeing four? Okay, so no more floating. Thumbs, I'm losing it. I see five for just Friday. Can I see how many are there for just Wednesday? Ooh, none of that. Can we do sums one more time for bringing forth the hybrid version? I think I got a little confused. Who's looking for the hybrid version? Ooh. Where is Lindsay? Um, so we have um five and five, it it looks like Kirk. So hybrid and just Friday.
Right, we can, we can prepare both of those and uh we'll enjoy the debate.
We'll have a little showdown um. On that. So any other further discussion or commentary? Go ahead, Scott.
I think you're gonna have a hard time resolving the five versus five. Um, maybe the compromise is. Fewer Wednesdays.
Or not if Lindsay is able to jump in us. She'll be the tiebreaker, but um. I think, I think that we can. Bring these two versions to the committee because it's only a difference of four versus three, right? Um, in the Wednesday, I'm sorry, in the hybrid one, I did not do the math. In the hybrid one, Jess, how many Wednesdays, how many Fridays?
Sorry, I was just trying to find my microphone. Hold on just one moment and let me pull that up. Um, so yeah, the. So Wednesday, early releases, there are. Let's see.
Looks like three.
There's four.
I apologize. I I have to work off like the one screen I have.
There's four Wednesdays and three Fridays.
Thank you. Well, Wednesday is three Fridays. One, two.
Madam Chair, if I can just close with one last thought.
Yeah.
I would just implore the members to think about as you uh are thinking in your minds about what you want to do moving forward. Is what our core mission is as a school district. Our core mission is to educate and to have school students in school as much as possible. And so we have to look at our systems and our structures and ask ourselves the question. Does our structure encourage or promote? Uh, more opportunities to not come to school? And we got to be cognizant of that and be thinking about that ultimately when we make a decision. So. It is, it is a core values vote according to what our mission is of. In our work.
All right, so I hear what you said, Scott. I think what we're gonna do is just have them bring these two, we'll have these two versions present at the meeting next. Time and then we're just gonna take a majority vote. Um, hopefully we can all be present and we won't only have ten people. Otherwise, we'll have to get really persuasive. All right, so I'm thinking that's the last of that. So Kirk, uh, is that okay? So guys, um. Okay, great. Any subcommittee shareouts that haven't already been shared?
Uh, the building committee uh will be meeting uh tomorrow evening. Uh, we're gonna have a discussion on solar. Uh, specifically to consider a letter of intent. Uh, um, so encourage folks to tune in.
Um, no decisions are being made on solar tomorrow night.
Correct.
All right.
That's correct. There's no decisions being made on solar.
Um, we had originally said that.
We're discussing the pathway to get to that point.
Or potential pathway?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any other committee shareouts, subcommittee shareouts?
Um, communication subcommittee has a presentation um ready to. Share out and I guess we just need some guidance on whether the superintendent would like to join us. To review it prior to bringing it to the school committee. Um. Should we follow up with?
Sounds great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just jump in with Masterson and she'll put it on my calendar.
Perfect. We can invite you to our next meeting and then we'll get it on the agenda for the school committee, Leah. Does that sound right?
Sounds great. I'm gonna actually put it in the parking lot right now. This is um the. School Committee. Communication Strategy Survey Results.
And and the website, yeah, yeah.
Okay, which which might result in like a a rehab of our webpage on the website, right?
Yeah.
Okay, any other subcommittee shareouts? All right, guys, um, let's talk planning calendar. I am. I can share. Or Alita's already on it. There it is. So as you guys uh know, our next meeting is going to be November. Nope, December third. So Alita, can you pull it over to December third? I can't really see what you're sharing. I'm sorry. Thank you. So December third, um, we have a few things already on there, but anything else that you would like to add?
So I I, Ms. Ms. Chair, um, I think we had a brief exchange regarding the an OPEB readout. Or review maybe. So I think that a brief. Review of the OPEB situation would be in order at that point.
Great. Do you want to make that just a subcommittee shareout or would you like to put it as an agenda item, perhaps um unfinished business?
So we have three slides just to kind of review the concept. Um. Whatever you think would be most prudent to share those slides and maybe have a little conversation. Um, open to whatever you think the right way to go is.
I'm gonna put it under unfinished business. And and call it the OPEB recommendation review.
Sounds good.
Great. And if you could just send those materials to Alita whenever you're ready, that would be great.
Okay.
Thanks, Scott. Any other things that you guys would like to see on the planning calendar?
Leah?
Yeah.
Um, if you have Alita scroll down just a little bit, um. To the one, the meeting after that, so we, so we'll review and vote on the um. Graduation requirements, doing a first read of the competency determination, but then that would be a separate, it wouldn't go in the consent agenda. It would be separate.
Thank you, Alita. It's actually already down there, so you can just delete that.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Anything else, guys? All right, as always, if anything comes to you, just let me know. Um, Kirk and I uh meet, as you know, just. Pulling the agenda together and if there's something that you want on there, just let me know and. We'll work it in. All right, everybody. So it's been a good one. This one was a little longer than usual, so I appreciate your energy and all of your time. But I'm gonna move to adjourn now. Do I have a second?
Second.
Nice, Jackie. Um, any discussion? Is that a thing? I always forget. I'm gonna vote yes to adjourn. Jackie?
Yes.
Matt? Uh, John?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jillian?
Yes.
And Scott?
Yes.
All right, as always, thanks, everybody.